So, how about we get started on time so we can get done in an efficient manner? So, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the monthly meeting of the Missoula County Public Schools Board of Trustees. And we are missing trustee Lorenzen, trustee Wake, and trustee Decker, who all had other obligations tonight, but we have everyone else here. So, we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, there is an agenda that the trustees have received. Is there any request to revise or change the order on the agenda? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and proceed tonight under the agenda as it's been established. So, the next item is item number four, to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of November 12th, 2019. So, they're beginning on page six. Is there anything that anyone would like to modify in those minutes? Seeing no hands going up, then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting from November 12th? Moved by trustee Oldperson and second by trustee Dugger. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to public comment on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public who wants to bring an item to the board's attention. It has to be an item that's not on the agenda tonight because this is public comment only. If it needs to eventually come to the agenda, then that means that trustees can actually discuss the item, but since it wasn't noted up to the public, we won't be discussing any non-agenda items tonight. Is there anyone who has any non-agenda items? Thanks. So, come to the podium and press the red button, or press the button so it turns red. And then, if you can state your first and last name, and if there's an unusual spelling, can you spell it so we capture it correctly for the minutes?
Well, good evening. My name is Glenda Weasel. I work for the Indian Ed Department here. I'm one of the Native American specialists, and I just wanted to welcome you guys. We are having a winter gathering event here at Russell Elementary on Friday. The feed starts at 5:00, and then the event starts from 6:00 to 9:00. And everyone is welcome, and it is free.
Thank you. Any other public comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, then we'll move on to community connection. And so, I think superintendent, I don't know who's introducing the cast of characters. Principal Becky Sorenson and...
Yes, and Karen's gonna help here in a sec, but we just have a really unique opportunity this evening to recognize something that doesn't happen very often, perhaps once in a lifetime, when one of our schools is named as a national blue ribbon school. Only 312 schools in the entire country out of literally tens of thousands of schools, so this is an outstanding honor and just doesn't happen very often, and we felt like it was important to make sure that Principal Sorenson and her staff are recognized, and Karen was gonna help me with this. So, thanks, Karen.
Thank you for this opportunity. As I was thinking about it, it's, this is not about me, but it is a proud moment for me, because some of you may know that I was the principal at Lewis &amp; Clark for 17 years, and Becky Sorenson was a teacher at Lewis &amp; Clark. So, I remember when I first came to Missoula, and I first came and met with the staff, I remember interviewing Becky and just hoping against hope she would be there when I came back in the fall. So, she was, and I have appreciated the opportunity to work with her, and now it's a very proud moment for me to see her in the leadership role that she's in. So, we're talking about Hawthorne Elementary, which has approximately 420 kids. And as Dr. Watson mentioned, Hawthorne Elementary has just been recently recognized as a blue ribbon school. And what does it mean to be a blue ribbon school? In the state of Montana, there were three this year, all public schools, all elementary schools. And there are two categories of blue ribbon schools. One is the closing the achievement gap, and that would be a school that shows good spiking in their academics. And the other is exemplary high achieving. And Hawthorne is being recognized as being exemplary high achieving. That means they do a lot of things really well. They have amazing systems for MBI, the Montana Behavioral Initiative, or MTSS, the multi-tiered Systems of Support. They have amazing systems that have been recognized three years in a row by receiving a platinum award for Montana Behavioral Initiative, and that's a very high honor. One of the things that Hawthorne shares or shows is that they have strength in everything they do. They have strength in how their playground is organized. They have strength in how their dining room runs. They have strength in how science is taught. They have strength in how math is taught. They have strength in how their teachers work together in their professional learning communities. In other words, they have developed strengths across the board, and that's pretty unique. I also know that Becky was invited to a special leadership summit that was put on by the Department of Education, and that was in addition to being recognized as a blue ribbon school. Blue ribbons have been around since the 1980s, and I think Dr. Watson is correct, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And we certainly congratulate the staff and their leader Becky Sorenson for earning the Blue Ribbon Award this year representing Missoula County Public Schools. Becky.
Well, I am honored to be here, and I have a lot of my staff here, and this couldn't have been done without a strong staff. But before we start, I want to show you two really quick videos. If you know me, you know that I love the student reporters at Hawthorne, and we showcase our work every week on our YouTube channel, Becky Sorenson. I already know that teachers all around the world work really hard. Teachers in Missoula work really hard. It's not an easy job. But one of the things I saw at the Blue Ribbon Ceremony was the fact that these schools have educators that work hard, and they do a lot of extra things. They do extra things moving in the same direction for the same goal. Every one of those schools, they stood up and said, "We have a summer reading program. Our students read 50 books each summer, and here's what we do to fulfill our mission." And that's the thing that I think sets Hawthorne apart. I know we have great teachers in Missoula, but our staff does extra. You might have seen the ukuleles. That came from our music teacher who wrote a grant for ukuleles and spends her time, her extra time, teaching students who might not normally have music lessons, or they might, how to play the ukulele. And the kids are joyful in sharing what they learned. You saw our whole staff, that was last Friday, at the food bank volunteering to pack up Empower packs. Our staff believes that you need to have a community of learners. They believe that in order to be a community, everybody needs to work hard, everybody has to persevere, and everybody has to give, and they model it every day. There they are. So, this is my chance to kind of showcase a little bit about our school. A couple of you've been there, not everybody, some things that you might not know about us. In the last couple of years, we've received a lot of awards, and it's a little hard to get the awards because it's a lot of pressure. We were, in 2018, a Project Lead the Way Distinguished School. In 2019, we were a National PTA School of Excellence. In 2019, we had a Montana PTA Educator of Excellence. In the last two years, we've had two Gold Star teachers. We have won numerous one-class-at-a-time grants, Ed Foundation Grants, Donors Choose Projects. To make it special, our teachers go an extra amount to make sure we can keep learning, but keep learning special and fun. We, like Karen said, have won platinum from the state of Montana three years in a row. I know we are the only school around here to have done that. We are a school-wide Title I school. Our kids don't come with all, always, with what they need. An example of that is we have a recent class of graduates who, when they started, 39% of them could not write or recognize their name. Later, 83% of them were proficient on the state math test, and it's a hard one. If you ever looked at that test, it is not easy. They can read, they can write, they can be problem solvers. But how do you become a blue ribbon school? Everybody cares. Hey, I'm not gonna say that the teachers around Missoula and Montana don't care. But one of the things that we did was implement the PLC model, Professional Learning Communities model. The school district helped us get that training. Title I supported us. I think I went three times trying to soak it in, "How can I be like Rebecca DeVore?" She's like my professional mentor, Batman right there that said, "Kids win because of what we do." We saw him at a National RTI training, and we modeled our tiered system after the work that he was doing with response to intervention. There are people sitting right here that were listening to him, and we were trying to figure out, "How can we close the gap faster? How can we structure our school day so that we can meet with small groups and help kids learn faster?" That group that 39% could not write or recognize their name, they helped us build our tiered system of support, because they weren't buying it even in kindergarten. When we said, "Oh, this is fun," they're like, "Mm, no." We lost a few teachers along the way as they moved up, but in the end, they succeeded because of our hard work. Our PLC work looks like professional work. It looks like the work that is done by a doctor, and a lawyer, and an accountant. Our teachers get together, they unpack the standards, they look at the rigor of the standards, they develop common assessments, they track student progress on spreadsheets, they look at student progress and plan for intervention, enrichment, and instruction. One of the things that you would, if you looked into our math scores last year, more than 40% of our students in grades three, four, or five scored advanced on the math test. That's partially because of our tiered system. We meet with small groups. If they already know it, we try to move them ahead. We've, our teams study best practices. They look at our data and say, "Oh, my gosh, we need to know this." And they study together to implement it. We're still studying. We're still learning together. We have lots of leaders on staff. The people that are sitting here are all leaders in something. In our staff, you have to be a leader, because we all share our knowledge and work together. A big part of our mission, too, is to create community in classrooms across grade levels and across our whole school. You can, I hope you could kind of see it and feel it in the videos, but that creating community and making kids feel safe and secure at school as best we can helps them take learning risks. I am so, so proud to be a part of the staff. I know I am their leader, but I sit amongst leaders, I sit amongst learners, and I sit amongst really, really great people. Thanks, you guys. We did get a flag that we're trying to figure out where we're going to put it, and we do have a plaque that I can leave here, or if somebody wants to take it around, you can see the plaque. We also got letters from the President of the United States, Senator Tester, and Representative Gianforte, and people from all over the United States. We have letters from them. And that means a lot to us, just to be recognized, but tomorrow we have to get up, and we have to move forward, and we have to keep working hard. So, I appreciate your support. I especially appreciate the support of Title I, because they've believed in our vision and helped us through professional development meet that vision. And I just urge all of you to really believe in the staff at each school and provide a structure so that we can continue and have time to work together and dig into that data and learn together, because that's how we're going to achieve.
Will you take some questions?
Sure. You guys, pipe in, pipe up.
My question was, can you introduce yourself?
Sure. Sure. Gwen Firm, kindergarten. And Amy Jansen, she is one of our CSCT therapists, actually, and I want to say, give a plug for CSCT. They really, really work with us. They push into classrooms. They help students generalize skills that they're working on. Mary Beth Jordanay, kindergarten. Emily Weber, fourth grade. Brenda Griggs, the amazing music teacher. Rhonda Kraus, Title I reading and math. Logan Donathorpe, third grade. Chrissy Pucko, our instructional coach and a Title I teacher. The coaching piece is really important for us, too. Just yesterday, she took a teacher on a learning walk and with some observations to improve their practice. Another teacher asked me today, "When do I get to go?" Megan Houlihan, she's an amazing health enhancement teacher. She's jumped in with our teams and used strategies to help keep kids healthy, happy, and learning. And yet, Rorick, first grade. Did I get everybody?
Any other questions?
I just have a couple of comments. One, it's unbelievable that you were recognized in such a great fashion for the work that you do every day, not even expecting any kind of reward, and yet someone paid attention and did that great ceremony in DC for you. And so, thank you to all the staff for being here tonight. We really appreciate all you do. When we came to the school visit, even though, you know, we're by statute looking at the building, but you could just feel the energy at Hawthorne in every class with every kid and with every strategy going on in the building, and it was just a really great visit to the school. And finally, I want to say, thanks for getting Gabe up there to say congratulations in your video. He was one of our student trustees, and it's really nice to see how he's doing. So, I didn't realize...
It helps when mom is on staff.
Well, I figured that much.
The other thing that was, that I found out through all of this, when we showed the video, I was on the plane with Senator Danes, and yeah, that was pretty important. He sat in the cheap seats back with me, you know? But when we showed the video to students, they were impressed with the fact that a Hawthorne student went to the Naval Academy. It meant a lot to them. And then, when we did the assembly and celebrated our Blue Ribbon Award, the Big Sky cheerleaders came, and the kids loved it. And it made me think that we need more models for our students, because when they see younger people, they know that they can achieve that. And so, that was really, it was really fun. And, you know, it's important. One of the kids popped up with a comment on the YouTube channel, "A Hawthorne student went to the Naval Academy," and I'm like, "You can be next."
Well, thank you very much, and thank you all for being here. And I know it's a school night, so feel free to leave whenever is a good point for leaving. And we'll move on to 7A, which are the student trustee reports. And so, I believe Daisy's filling in for Isaac from Sentinel, so if you want to just introduce yourself, because we're actually on TV. So, if you can turn on the microphone that's kind of closest to you and maybe move it down, and then just let us know what's going on at school.
Good evening, everyone. I hope your holiday season is going well. My name is Daisy Kalina, and I'm filling in for Isaac Odegaard, who was unable to make it to this meeting. As winter approaches, Sentinel is in full holiday swing, with all music programs preparing to perform at their winter shows. Orchestra will be playing on the 16th, choir will perform on the 18th, and band is performing as we speak. There will be joint concerts between the Assembles and Sentinel's music programs on the morning of the 19th in the Margaret Johnson Theater. In other festive news, Sentinel's student government is sponsoring both our annual door decorating contest, as well as a dress-up week on the week leading up to winter break, except for Wednesday, when it'll be the annual DECA ugly sweater contest. Student government is busy in many areas this holiday season. We'll be decorating the main hall for the holiday season and delivering candy grams with proceeds going to Sentinel's Family Resource Center. Student government has already recently made a large donation to the Family Resource Center instead of their usual food drive. The donation will go towards food, clothes, and other supplies for Sentinel students and families in need. Winter sports have started up as well and are beginning to compete. Sentinel Wrestling kicked off their season last weekend at the Poulsen Invite and competed in Helena earlier today. Swimming started at the same weekend at the Kalispell Invite, and both girls and boys basketball started their seasons with games against Big Sky last Saturday. Sentinel's Speech and Debate performed well in Kalispell, taking third. Their next competition is this Friday and Saturday in Great Falls. Also occurring recently, Sentinel sent a large team of students to compete at Model United Nations at the university. The competition was tough, but Sentinel was able to receive a large number of notable awards. Sentinel teams won Outstanding Country, Distinguished Country, and Honorable Country Awards. Three students won Outstanding Senior Awards. Three won Outstanding Position Paper Awards. Six won awards for Distinguished Position Paper. Two students won Honorable Position Paper Awards. Four won Outstanding Delegate Awards. Four students won Distinguished Delegate Awards. And five students won Honorable Delegate Awards, bringing it to a total of 30 awards. With 2019 coming to a close, Sentinel is preparing to mark another excellent year of operation and is looking forward to the next year. I hope you all have a great holiday season with very little stress. Thank you.
Thanks for that. And what's going on at Big Sky?
Is this, like, loud? Fiona Morrow with Big Sky High School. We've seen a lot of success with our MTSS program and the implementation of the Eagle Code this week. We're seeing as a new attendance policy is about to go into place to encourage students to not be tardy to first period and after lunch classes. We can see that Big Sky activities have come to a kickoff, specifically those of winter sports. Speech and Debate was performing at the previously mentioned tournament and will be competing this next Friday at Great Falls, as previously stated. We also sent a large delegation to Model United Nations, and saw over 20 students recognized for awards, as well as several countries. We also have seen that with the kickoff of sports, basketball played Sentinel, and I believe we won. We can also see that academically, we're starting to go into right before finals week, and students are coming in towards crunch time, but we're seeing academic prowess is up at an all-time high, as well as the fact that we're going to have our annual winter assembly for the first time in a few years on the 20th. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Abe Johnson from Hellgate. The first, the end of the first semester is right around the corner, and winter sports are underway. Basketball, boys and girls, are both headed to Billings this weekend. And swimming had their last meet, or their first meet last weekend. And student government, our members are focusing primarily on small changes that can be made around Hellgate. For example, new drinking fountains. And a big one that has kind of come to the forefront for us is better locker rooms for our girls, as they are quite a bit worse than the boys, and that needs to be changed. Many students in National Honor Society are finishing or working on their projects, and BPA, Business Professionals of America, is one of the most popular lunchtime clubs at Hellgate, is preparing for state, which will be in the spring. And then, Hellgate also sent a large group of delegates to the Model United Nations with several winning awards. And next week, this will be the second time that it happens, a group of senior leaders will meet with our principal, Mr. Miller, to discuss kind of our outcomes and goals for our senior year. And we did this about a month and a half ago, and it was very productive, and the seniors are looking forward to it, especially because he buys them lunch. And other than that, things are running smoothly at Hellgate, and students are looking forward to the longer winter break this year.
Thanks. Ann Willard?
Hi, I'm Lyra Otoman with the Willard Wire. I'm so used to advertising by now. I'm with Willard, alternative high school. Yeah, I've been advertising all week, so you guys gotta forgive me for that. So, we have a new trimester that we just went into after Thanksgiving break. We have an influx of a whole bunch of new students, and we hope that they'll enjoy their new facility and our awesome new building, because a lot of them have said, "Wait a minute, I thought it was brick." So, we have a talent show, I believe, on the 20th, and it's also the day we have a Christmas dinner with all our students and staff. We, our extracurricular activities right now are gladiators, which happens in our gym, DND, which happens on Tuesdays after school, and I could've sworn we had a third one, but well. Journalism is preparing for their newest issue. We're hoping to release it by December 19th, but if we don't get it out by December 19th, then we're hoping to at least get it out after winter break. We have a possibility of being on KGBA and have our own radio show. I know, and the Willard Broadcast is doing really well so far. We have a new news anchor since old Grace left, and we have a new Grace. We have a new news anchor since old Grace left, and we have a new Grace as an anchor. Don't get confused, it's a little confusing. And then, the Willard documentary, we're hoping to have a rough draft to release to the Big Sky Film Festival by the time the Big Sky Film Festival comes around. So, thank you.
That doesn't sound right?
Sounds like horse colts.
Hello?
Hi, Claire. Go ahead and share your report.
Hi, Claire. It's Marshall.
Okay, Eric's gonna start.
How's it going? Happy December, everyone. This is a very eventful month for New York City High School. We have a senior debate on the 18th, which will be discussing healthcare. There will be a new student English teacher that will be helping Ms. Quinn and Ms. Messenger. The Leo's Club is doing a Christmas crate drawing, and the proceeds of that will go to the Bahamas to help families who are affected by Hurricane Dory.
This weekend, we just had a basketball tournament in Brunan, and the girls won both their weekend games, and the boys won on Saturday. So, that was pretty exciting for us to start the season off. And then, this upcoming Saturday, we play away in Plains.
Our cross-country ski club is currently dry-land training, because there's not enough snow to ski yet. A little disappointing, but whatever works.
And then, tomorrow, Red Cross is coming up and doing a blood drive, and the student council is going to help organize them. And student council is also having an Ugly Sweater Contest next Thursday. We're gonna have a prize, and it'll be super fun. And then, also this week, we had Graphic Art Kids. They completed HOC posters, and they just show what our HOC acronym stands for. And we're looking forward to doing more partnering with the U of M Writing Center, because our seniors in dual credit just did it last week, and they really enjoyed it. So, we're excited about that. And that's all we have.
Well, thank you, and thank you to all the trustees for being here. I know it's a school night, so we'll be hanging up with Claire and Eric, and if anyone needs to leave, this is probably a good time to leave. And thank you for your report. We really appreciate your diligence and.
Thank you.
And now, we move on to the superintendent report.
All right. Thank you, Chair Holland. I just have just a couple of things I wanted to alert the board about. So, we've got some dates now for our strategic planning process. I know that you're aware that we've asked the Montana School Boards Association to help us with our strategic planning process, and so, we're looking right now at January 23rd, February 25th, and March 25th, as three dates that we've targeted to start that process. And likely, will be evening meetings. We'll be engaging the community in those meetings, and so, we want to make sure that we're available for those meetings. If you can put those on your calendar, and we'll be getting more information about the exact times and everything for those three meetings. We anticipate all those meetings will happen here in the boardroom, just depending on the size of the group, but we think we can manage it here. Also, wanted to tell you that tomorrow, Pat and I, and maybe Hatton, I'm not sure, will be attending the Parks and Conservation Committee of the city council. And so, as you're well aware, the board approved the lease for, the renewal of the lease for Westside Park, and then, we also had a presentation on all the plans for renovations at Westside Park. And so, all those things will be presented to the city council. They've asked for us to come tomorrow afternoon at 3:20, 3:25, just to show our support for the partnership between the district and Westside Park. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. The final thing, you may have caught in the news that the city is working on a potential plan and redesign of Lower Miller Creek Road. That does impact us, as Jeanette Rankin sits on Lower Miller Creek Road. And so, Pat and Burley and I braved the cold weather last week and stood on the corner there in front of Jeanette Rankin to kind of gauge the traffic at drop-off time. So, we wanted to kind of see for ourselves the impact of the traffic, the impact that the school has on that road. We got a great education by just an outstanding crossing guard that's working that corner, and he really helped us understand what some of the issues are. And so, the reason that we did that is the city was looking for some feedback from us with regards to redesigning that road and some of the problems that we were seeing at that intersection. So, we will get back to the city with just some of our observations, and then hopefully have further discussions with the city about the redesign of that, of Lower Miller Creek Road. So, I just wanted to report on those three things.
Thanks. And now, we move on to old business under personnel negotiations and policy. And A1 is to approve the second reading of Board Policy 4332, Conduct on School Property. As you can see from looking at page 15, which is attached to the agenda, it's a pretty subtle change that was required by a change in the statute. So, we had posted it for public comment, and no public comment was received. So, the recommendation is that the board adopt the revised Board Policy 4332, Conduct on School Property. It just pretty much expands the definition of what narcotic products are. Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 4332? Moved by Trustee Service, is there a second? Seconded by Trustee McDonald. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then, all trustees in favor of the motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 4332, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then, we move on to the second reading of Board Policy 5120, Hiring Process and Criteria. Again, this was sent out for public comment. After the first reading, no public comment was received. The recommend, or the language that is being changed is found on page 16. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions. And there's a, is there a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 5120, Hiring Process and Criteria? Moved by Trustee Smith, is seconded by Trustee Kendall. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then, all those trustees in favor of the motion to adopt revised Board Policy 5120, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then, we move on to the second reading of Board Policy 5225, Tobacco-Free Policy. Again, this is something mandated by the legislature, and you can see the changes on page 17. It was sent out after the first reading for public comment, and none was received. Are there any questions first? Seeing none. Is there a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 5225? Moved by Trustee Service, is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Smith. Is there any board discussion? I'll just throw out one thing. I appreciate that the trustees are taking the time. We're really making an effort to clean up all our policies and make sure they're complying with current state law. So, I know we're seeing a lot of these each meeting. So, thank you for your patience in making sure that we're up to speed. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then, all trustees in favor of the motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 5225, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then, we move on to new business. Under Teaching and Learning, there is a request to approve the grant application summary that Christie, who's a teacher out at the AIG program, has submitted. And so, Karen, are you going to take the lead on that? Oh, sorry. Yeah, I was looking for you at the, sometimes you move to the podium, and sometimes you don't, so I'm sorry.
Sorry, excuse me. There is quite a lengthy description of the grant application in the grant application summary. The thing I wanted to just emphasize here, I find that what they're doing is extremely creative. You might be concerned that we are going to use grant money to hire staff, and that's not something that we would typically do. But in this case, they're going to replace themselves for a short period of time, so then, they can develop the curriculum and develop the processes of farm-to-school. So, we're not looking at a long-term hiring of another staff member. It's just a one-year, so that both Tom and Christie can get the work done that they need to get done to implement the program, that we have the possibility of with our new facility and our new relationship with food service and MCPS.
Thanks. Any questions for Karen? So, I just wanted to say thank you for clearing that up. When we toured the AIG Center last week, that was one thing that came up, and we appreciate understanding. I think it helped to talk with the staff there, so that we could understand that it's really to let the staff there have a break, so that they can actually come up with a plan, so that they can keep moving forward in such a positive way. So, thanks for that, Claire.
Yes, and Christie would be here, but the FFA is packing their special boxes tonight, and so, she decided she could trust me to give her information, and she could be with the kids.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Then, is there a motion to approve the grant application summary that's found beginning on page 18? Moved by Trustee Smith, is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Service. Is there any board comment? Trustee Service?
I'd just like to say I was very impressed with the AIG program, and I'm, I would support anything they want to do. I said I'm very impressed with the AIG program after the tour we took, and I would support anything they want to do to do more. So, thank you.
Any other board comment? I also think it's really awesome, and I'm going to abstain as an employee of USDA from voting on this. And I, any other board comment? I also will echo, you really learn the nuts and bolts and the on-the-ground activities when you tour the AIG Center. There's so much going on there, and it's a high school to getting a job experience that very few kids get an opportunity to do. We saw them clocking in, clocking out, working on various projects, making, figuring out their little boxes so they could do fundraising. And also, they have to deal with USDA, or I think it's a state inspector that comes in twice a week, and so, they have to make sure they have enough product for him to inspect. So, it's very busy there. So, this is a great opportunity for Tom and Christie to have an opportunity to step back and look at a bigger picture. So, anyone else? So, any public comment? Thumbs up, I see. So, all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the grant application summary that's found beginning on page 18, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed, all those abstaining. So, there's one abstention by Trustee Newbold. Then, we move on to the personnel report. It's found beginning on page 20. Is there anything of significance?
No, it's actually probably the smallest personnel report you'll see this year.
Any questions for Dave? Seeing none. Then, the recommendation is that we approve the items on the provided personnel report. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by Trustee Old Person, is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Service. We don't discuss individuals on the list, but we can have general discussion as a board on the report. Is there any board comment? Again, with the same restriction, is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then, all trustees in favor of approving the items on the personnel report, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then, we move on to approve the first reading of Board Policy 2450, Recognition of American Indian Peoples' Culture and Heritage. So, Rob, if you want to kind of walk through the background.
Sure, yep. Just a couple of things on this particular item. You probably remember in the last legislative session, there was a change in state law, and specifically around the allowance of tribal regalia and objects of cultural significance being allowed at public events. And that changed last year, and in fact, became state law. The section in state law is 2-1-315. What that created was an opportunity for us to notify our American Indian students that those items were welcome, and I'm sure they were probably welcome before that, but this just made it official. And we actually, I actually have a letter from Superintendent Thane that went out last May that just reminded students and families that those items were welcome at graduation ceremonies. And the last thing sort of to check off our list is to update school policy, so it accurately reflects the law. And so, that's what you see here with 2450, is our school policy around recognition of American Indian Peoples' Cultural Heritage, with the addition of that statement that students may wear traditional American Indian tribal regalia or objects of cultural significance at a graduation ceremony.
Any questions? Trustee Old Person?
I do know previously, we had an issue with a student at Big Sky High School who wore it for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Is there any policy procedure that would include that as part of this, or is that something separate?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I would tell you that this one pertains specifically to, the law pertains specific to public events, but that particular, the issue that you're discussing would fit under several other of our district policies around, you know, allowances of student, allowances of student cultural significance or wearing things that are of cultural significance. So, I think we have other policies and procedures that would address that issue. This one pertains specifically to these items to be worn in sort of public ceremonies like graduations.
Any other questions? I actually have the same question. Since the language is broader, that it's, they're allowed at public events, could we add the word "in" that they, in the last sentence, they may wear traditional, et cetera, et cetera, at public events, including a graduation ceremony? So, it actually complies, there could be, say, for example, the Most Inspiring Student Award, or someone wants, that are other public events. And since the statute has broader language than just graduation, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, so, how about significance right there? I put "at public events, including but not limited to graduation ceremonies."
Is everyone okay with that? Okay. Any other questions? So, if the proposed, if the first reading of Board Policy 2450 includes the modified language that Dr. Watson just read to us, the recommendation would be to adopt it for first reading and to send out the proposed policy for public comment. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by Trustee Old Person, and seconded by Trustee Duggar. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Old Person?
Is there a policy for staff and teachers and administrators and trustees, if there's anything they wanted to wear too? Or is there, has there been anything in the past that hinders teachers from wearing anything as well? Do they need a policy or a procedure?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of anything in Personnel Handbook or Personnel Policy related to that. I don't, you know, I don't believe we've got dress code in policy, or.
We do have some specific language in our staff handbook, but it's very generalized and nothing in our policy or handbook rather that would limit or prohibit that type of wearing regalia or traditional clothing.
Any other public comment? I mean, sorry, board comment or discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then, all trustees in favor of the motion to adopt for first reading and to put out for public comment, Board Policy, let me get the number, 2450, Recognition of American Indian Peoples' Cultural and Heritage, please indicate by raising your hand. With, as modified, as was modified by Dr. Watson. That's unanimous. That's unanimous as all trustees present. Then we move on to approve the first reading of Revised Board Policy 8100, Transportation. And so, this is, again, one of those policy changes that is mandated by changes in the law. So, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
Yeah, similar to the last policy, I would just like to point out to the board that this is something that we already have done in practice. So, when, when ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, was finalized at the federal level, they broadened the definition a little bit of students that would have access to services under McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance. They broadened it to include students that were in foster care with child protective agencies. And so, we, we would have already provided services for those kiddos, but this just clarifies in policy that we will provide transportation for students in foster care.
Any questions? See, none. Then, the recommendation is that the trustees approve the first reading of Revised Board Policy 8100 and authorize its posting for public comment. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by Trustee Kendall and second by Trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? See, none. Any public comment? See, none. Then, all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the first reading of Revised Board Policy 8100 and to authorize its posting for public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. That is unanimous as all trustees present. Then, because we're going to go into a work session next, we will take public comment on non-agenda items from anyone who wasn't able to be here at the beginning of the meeting, but might have public comment on anything we haven't yet discussed. See, no public comment. Then, we'll move into a board work session. I don't think it will take that long. I don't know if anyone needs a break, but because it's a work session, it's a little less formal. So, Dr. Watson and I discussed that I won't need to recognize everyone by raising their hand. He'll, if you have a question for him on his summary of his, you know, his goals, then just go ahead and raise your hand, and he'll acknowledge you, and you can ask for clarification or questions in that fashion. And then, at the end of the meeting, we'll explain what we're going to do with these If anyone's ever been in a, any kind of strategic planning meeting where you have to prioritize things, and it's a large group, then start picking and choosing among the various items of, of the topics that we began our discussion last board meeting and we're continuing, because it's a pretty lengthy list. And in the end, Dr. Watson would appreciate feedback in terms of what individual trustees' priorities are. So, he'll walk us through that final process, but we'll, I'll turn it over to Rob to continue where we left off. And I don't know if you want to summarize just generally the topics we got through last. Since we're still being televised by MCAT, I'll just let everyone on TV know that there is a Superintendent Early, or Entry Plan and Report that was distributed to the trustees. And we went through several of the topics last board meeting. Now, we'll continue on, and then talk about how to possibly prioritize them.
Did I lose some people? Oh. I really appreciate the time this evening. I just wanted to, I know last time was a little while ago, so just wanted to remind everybody kind of where we left off. So, I have identified through the conversations I've had with community members and, and staff, I've identified some immediate imperatives that I just need your feedback on. I also welcome your questions on these, because it helps develop the ideas a little further. So, right now, they just exist sort of on a list, and we were working through some of these together. I also just want to remind the trustees that there are other items that may not, may not have made this list, and it's not that they're not important to us as a school district, it's just that these are the things that kind of had a recurring theme on the list several times. And so, these were ones that sort of rose to the top in terms of priorities. But at the very end, I'll show you some other items that also have come up since I made the list. So, there's always more items, and I understand that. And the last thing I'll say about these is, these don't necessarily represent the work of our district for the next 20 years. These are just things I think that need some attention. But we will need to define what the next steps are in our work, you know, when we, when we, when we go through our strategic plan, and we start looking at the next three to five years, that'll help us define the next immediate imperative. So, these ones are just ones that we're working on now, but they don't necessarily dictate what's going to happen after, after this is over. So, I think we made it through most of the first part of these. I talked about these last time, but we could definitely go back. The reason that you have the little cards is because I am going to ask you to do some prioritization. So, some of you are already organizing in a fashion, maybe alphabetical order, I'm not sure, but I'll ask you to do some prioritization here in just a second, after we go through a few more of these. But remember that I'm really looking for a broad spectrum of feedback. So, I've gotten feedback from my administrative team as, you know, how they would prioritize these. I'm getting your feedback. I'm also going to seek feedback from our staff in a variety of ways. So, I'll take all that feedback together and sort of decide what the next steps are for us. So, I think last time we got through, if I remember right, I think we ended on the County Interdisciplinary Child Information Team. And I had talked about the ones before that, but I'm going to move into the next ones. And I did provide you this time with a copy of the PowerPoint, so if you really want to follow along, you certainly can. So, let me talk in general terms about what I found out about boundary study. So, I know the board was, was engaged in our boundary study last spring. It was something that Superintendent Thane was working on with Hatton and some other folks, and they got to a point where they asked the board to make some decisions around some of the boundary shifts. What I wanted to explain to you is that I had a chance to meet with the Boundary Committee and spoke to several of them in one-on-one meetings, just to kind of get a sense of what our next steps are with the boundary study. Couple of things that I would like to do before we launch into that project again, couple of things I would like to do. One of the things is I'd like to have a really clear understanding of what our projections are for each grade-level band, so what our K5 projections are for the next five years, what our middle school projections are, and also what our high school projections. The other thing I think right alongside that that needs to be done is a room utilization study. And the reason I say that is that our middle schools were, what I've been told, were designed for 750 students. But as those middle schools are being designed and built, sometimes those designs change in that process of being built. And so, I can't say for sure that those middle schools will actually hold 750 students. And the only way to really say that would be to do a room utilization study. And that's a, that's a process that, that takes a little bit of time. There's professionals that do this work, and they basically go room by room and take a look at a classroom and decide what's, what is it being used for, what was it designed for, what's it actually being used as? So, that room utilization study really needs to be done, not only for our middle schools, but also our elementary schools. As some of the trustees have been on tours with us, you've noticed in some of our elementary schools, there might appear to be an empty classroom that's being used as an office or being used as some other program. And so, someone needs to go through their buildings and decide what's the actual capacity of these buildings. So, we know that our elementary schools were designed for 500, but does each elementary school actually have a capacity of 500? That's something I don't think has been determined. So, in my experience with changing boundaries, the very first thing you need to do is have this room utilization study along with your projections, so that you know when you're going to run out of room at any particular school. Now, obviously, Jeanette Rankin was pretty obvious that we were definitely going to run out of space there, and so I do believe that shifting in boundary was, was the right thing to do. But before we launch into more boundary work, I think there's some, just some background homework that needs to be done. Number one, the projections need to be solidified, but also this room utilization. Our, several of our schools are still under construction, as you're aware. The middle schools are still under construction, so, you know, it, it may, it may take a while before we can really do an accurate room utilization. But what's important to me is, again, talking to our entire community, finding out, is this a priority we need to do right away, or is this something that we can work on later? That's what I don't know, and that's why I bring it to you all as something, as a topic of discussion. So, that's the boundary study. Questions on that before I move on? Yes, sir. Yeah, so the, the one that I've looked at with Pat is from McGibben, and I, they actually did an update with that on our current enrollment this year. So, I think, I think that's good data. They're, what a professional, what folks, consultants that do this work, basically what they do is they take those projections and they match it up with room utilization, and they can actually tell us, for example, Lewis and Clark might be at 85% capacity. But the only way they can tell us that is when they know how many classrooms, they have to have both. And that's what I haven't seen yet, and I apologize if it's out there and just haven't, I haven't found it, but I haven't seen that piece yet. So, I think the enrollment data we have is pretty solid, at least for a couple more years, and so I think we're, I don't think we're going to have to redo that, but... Yeah, yeah. I think that, I think that's what I would like to see, too. And we've asked a consultant that does this work, and he said, you know, he, the buildings don't have to be completely finished for him to do a room utilization study, but he needs to know what they're being designed for, and how many classrooms are being designed for, and then what they're going to be used for. So, there is some boots-on-the-ground work that needs to be done with our schools. Well, there's a lot of folks that do this work. Last year, Superintendent Thane engaged WGM as some of the consulting around the geocoding and the mapping. So, they're, they have experience in this work. There's some national-level folks that do this work professionally. So, one that a lot of school districts have used, even in Montana, and I'm going to space the name, Hatton, Cropper, Cropper GS, and that's somebody that Hatton and I just talked with on the phone, and I kind of talked through with him, like, what's really our next step? And, you know, he's, he said, well, you really need these pieces in place before you can make really solid decisions on when you start, want to, when you want to engage in this boundary work, or when you have to engage in this boundary work. Yeah, we, we can, we can get that work as quickly as we want to. I mean, I think we could engage in that this, yeah, this spring, engage in a consultant. I think there's an interesting push-pull, like, how long do we wait to let some of these buildings actually finish? And I say that because I've lived through construction as a building principal, and I know what it says on paper, then I know what it actually looks like once you're, once it's finished, and how you're actually using the building. So, even though we might have a design, for example, for CS Porter, when it's actually completely finished and they're using the building, it might be more accurate to see what the room utilization is. So, I, I just, I want to be cautious with that one, but we could engage in that work fairly quickly. But that's part of the reason I bring it up to you all, because I need to feel a sense from you all, you know, where, where you're at with that one.
Looking even more way further down the line, is this something that would be prudent to plan for? I mean, every five years, we look at our curriculum for each subject. Is this something that might take a, so that we don't have to do a full-blown pin maps and room utilization? Is there something that we could do after we've done the first round of this to kind of keep on top of that information? Do you know, or is this, I mean, that's, this is more of a much broader thing, but I, I think is it, if that's part of the plan, that might be a worthwhile investment in time?
Yeah, the, the room utilization is, is good work that will have a fairly long shelf life until you start adding on to the buildings. And so, I actually believe the room utilization will be beneficial for us for years to come. What's really interesting is when they match that up with the projections, they can tell you exactly which year that building is going to be at 101% capacity or 102% capacity. That really helps with forecasting, because you can say, okay, you know, we've got, at that point in time, we got to do something different, because we're going to run out of space. And so, that's the piece I just feel like is missing, but I do think the room utilization can be used several years out. The projections may have to be redone every few years. That was a big topic, probably a good one to start with. Strategic planning, we chatted about this several times already. I won't go into a lot of detail. I, I just want you to know that when I met with individual board members, what I heard loud and clear is that the board really wanted to take an active role in the strategic planning process. That's part of the reason that Marcia, under Marcia's guidance, we engaged with the Montana School Boards Association. They have done this work for a lot of school districts in our state, and they have experience with this process. So, I know that adding more meetings to our schedule is never great, but if you can make those sessions that we have coming up in the early winters months, I think it'll be really great to have your voice in the room as we talk to our community. My, my job is to engage our, some of our community leaders, obviously, our teaching staff and our classified staff. We want a few of those voices in the room as well. And then, our administrative staff. We want several people at the table when we start taking a look at the strategic plan, because it will really dictate, you know, what, what our, what our imperatives are for the next three to five years. So, I think that one's sort of already working, and it's on the way, but I just want you to know that it, I added it to the list, because it was really important to several of the board members. Crisis response, we, we have, as you're well aware, we've got some great tools now at our disposal in our, in our schools related to school safety. You know, the lockdown buttons, the, the controlled entrances, so only, you know, only certain doors are open at certain times. We just have some great tools that we didn't have, you know, even three to five years ago. So, what I have found out, though, is that what we needed to do some work on is some, some of our drills. And so, what we've been doing in the last couple of months, and what we'll continue to do, is really revise our, our response plans. So, something that has worked well for us is we've engaged in a couple of tabletop drills, and if the board ever is interested to see what those look like, you're more than welcome to attend one of those. But basically, it's just, you go through a, a scenario, a school safety scenario, and you have teams of schools working together around a table and deciding how they're going to respond to that scenario. It really tests your processes and procedures around school safety. It's something that I felt was really important, and so it's something that we want to stay on top of, and I think it's, I think it's well underway, but it's an important topic. Under professional development, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to add one thing that was really eye-opening. Rob and I and Ann met with other AA chairs and superintendents, and one of the persons who was at the meeting was the Helena Superintendent, and it was just the week after they had found what turned out to be a non-explosive device. And he shared some of the places where the system fell down, including the fact that different agencies responding, different police agencies weren't talking to each other and were giving out misinformation. And, and so, he, it's, he, he made it really clear that when you have a situation like that, you, it, you, you... you realize where the holes are in your process. And we really appreciated him sharing that information, because it didn't make his life much easier when it happened. But he said he learned a lot from that process. So I just wanted to throw that in, that even when you think you have the best strategies in place, something can happen that you realize there's a space that's missing. So thanks to him.
And then professional development. Part of the reason it's on the list is we really need to revise our model for professional development. And the reason I say that is because it's harder and harder for us to find substitute teachers in our community, partly because we have a really low unemployment rate. And so there's not a lot of people looking for sort of those temporary, part-time jobs. And so what happens is when you have all of these initiatives that we're working on, for example, our math, our new math curriculum, our new ELA curriculum. Last spring, you heard from Carol Ewen about the PACS Good Behavior Game. That's really important for our K-5 schools. That, all of those initiatives require training. You can't just assume that you're going to have this new curriculum or this new strategy, and that teachers are going to know how to work it or how to do it. So all of the initiatives that we've talked about require training. And there's really limited opportunities for us to train our teachers. And so we were, in my opinion, we had an over-reliance on substitute teachers to really, you know, help our teachers get this training. I would always like our teachers in the classroom whenever we can, because, you know, obviously, that's our A-team. That's our first string that we want in the classroom. And so one of the things that I think we need to look at is our entire professional development model and figure out, how do we train teachers in this time when we have scarcity of substitute teachers? We have scarcity of resources in terms of time during the school day. You know, so we are going to have to take a real close look at our professional development model and figure out how we can do that differently. Yeah, what we did is we put a limit on the number of subs on it for any given day. And it helped a little bit, but we're still seeing some sub shortages. And Dave and his team are exploring lots of other ways to recruit different types of subs. And so I think it will improve. But we have taken some steps already this year to sort of curb the number of staff that are out of the classroom. What that means, though, it has an impact on the important training that needs to happen. And so now we're sort of delaying some of that training, and it's going to take longer to get some of these things implemented. And so all of these things that we've been chatting about take time. You'll hear one later in my list of other items. We really need to do some training around the new dyslexia law that was recently put through legislation. But that's going to take some really structured teacher training. And I worry, because we don't currently have a professional development model set up to really do that training. Okay, moving along. One of my favorites, high school enrollment and transfer procedure. I don't think there's, and I don't have a problem saying this. I don't think there's a week that's gone by in the five months that I've been here where I haven't had somebody talk to me about this issue. So it is an issue in our community. I think we just need to be honest with each other and talk about this. It's an issue for a variety of reasons. Some people feel really passionate about this. Some people feel passionate that we should have, you know, really robust, open enrollment procedures. Some people feel passionate that we need to tighten up our procedures. There's a lot of opinions on this, and it's an important issue. And it's an issue that's been in Missoula for a long time. And so I don't want to sugarcoat this one. This is not an easy one to work through. But I think we need to be real honest with ourselves as a district, because what we have right now is a lot of confusion around our enrollment and transfer process. And if nothing else, we just need to clear up some of those rules and procedures around that, so that there's less confusion. But quite honestly, I think we need to engage a group of stakeholders in our community to really define what the future looks like for our enrollment and transfer procedure. Because right now, it's just not very transparent. I'll just put it that way. And a lot of people get frustrated around our lack of transparency around this issue. And I think it's time for us to clean that up. So that's my soapbox. I had one soapbox tonight, that was it. That one will take, it'll take some time, and it'll take a focus group of people to really work on that. There'll be people on both sides that have an opinion on that. And I think we need to engage all those folks in a discussion to come up with the best solution. School start time, that one, as you're well aware, was something that was worked on a couple of years ago and got to a point where we wanted to implement some things, and we ran into a transportation problem that was really hard to get around. It came down to a lot of extra money that would be needed to run more bus routes. I put that on the list just because a lot of people mentioned that one to me. A lot of people wanted us to keep thinking about that and keep problem-solving with that one. It's not an easy fix. I don't have an easy fix for that one. I haven't had a chance really to engage with Beach and talk about their thoughts around that issue. But I think Beach might be able to help us problem-solve that. But I just wanted it on the list, because I didn't want it to drop off. I know it was very important to the community when we went through that work, and I didn't want people to feel like it just disappeared. Zero-waste by 2050. There's a very robust plan that the school board agreed to and wanted the district to engage in this initiative, this community initiative. And there are some things in that plan that have impacts on our budget. For example, if we want our schools to start a composting program, that takes money and time and training. And so this is an initiative. Obviously, we have a long time till 2050. So maybe you would put that one lower on your priority list, I don't know. But this is an initiative that I don't want to lose track of, because we've made some agreements to our community around this topic. And I feel it's important that we try to live up to those agreements and try to track what we're doing with that initiative. There's lots of great things going on right now with that initiative. But I know there's some expectations from our community to do even more than we're currently doing. But those things will take some time and some budget to get those implemented. So I wanted that one on the list. This next one is probably one that's already on its way. We are getting a new student information system starting next fall. And so our current student information system is Q. So if you have students in the district or have had students in the district, you're probably familiar with Q. Q is going away, and we've contracted with Infinite Campus to take over our student information system. Infinite Campus is used in a lot of places in the state, including at the Office of Public Instruction. So we feel like there'll be some really nice seamless ways to produce reports for OPI, because they also use Infinite Campus. The reason it's on the immediate imperative list is because to move to a whole new system is going to take a ton of staff training. It's going to take a really detailed plan, implementation plan. I know Ray and her team will be great at that, but we need to provide support in terms of resources and time to make sure our staff get appropriately trained on that. If we don't have a really good plan, or we don't put the time in, there's nothing faster that will sink our district than having people struggle with our student information system. Because I know a lot of parents rely on that, a lot of teachers rely on that. So we really need to be cognizant of how important that is for our district and be ready to implement that in the fall. But it's important, because it will take some time. Just a couple more, I promise, we're almost done. The general fund budget. So my desire is to take a really close look, and I've asked Pat to help me with this, take a really close look on what we're spending our money on. I know that you already know that, but I really want to take a close look on what things are we spending that are tied to accreditation versus what things are we spending that are discretionary? And how do we sustain some of these things that we want to do? So for example, if it's a priority for our district to institute some of those zero-waste initiatives, that's going to require some budget. And there's really no other way to get the budget than out of the general fund. And you all have probably heard this before, but the general fund is not unlimited. It's just a pie, and it's how we carve up the pie, is how we decide what's important. And so I believe we just need to engage in a process to take a really close look at our general fund budget, decide what our priorities are, what's discretionary in our budget, what's mandatory in our budget, and then decide how we can sustain some of these programs. Principal Sorenson tonight talked about Project Lead the Way, which is an outstanding STEM program. But that requires sustainability. You have to pay a yearly fee to belong to Project Lead the Way. You have to buy equipment related to Project Lead the Way. So if we've engaged in that and said that's one of our priorities, then there's some sustainability that goes with that. And that's the same thing for IB or dual language or our teacher mentors. So the general fund budget is not unlimited. And so we have to be real careful on how we're spending that and deciding where our priorities are and how we're going to spend it in the future. Last thing, I put this one on the list, because just out of a favorite of Burley. I'm joking. This is important. This one is really important. We are ending our construction. We've done a great job with these new environments and these new buildings. The next really tough step that we're going to have to ask ourselves, and eventually ask our community, is how do we support the maintenance of these new facilities? So I often tell folks, you would never buy a new car and never put any maintenance into it. That's just not smart. And the same thing goes for schools and buildings. When you invest a lot of money into them, you also have to keep investing maintenance into those buildings in order to keep them up and keep them going. If you don't, then you end up with years and years of deferred maintenance. And so that'll be a really good discussion for our board, is to, what are we going to do? Are we going to ask voters for a building reserve levy? If so, when are we going to do that? What does that campaign look like to educate the voters around that levy? I don't have any answers for any of those, but I just want to put it on the list, because that's something the board's going to have to, the board and the administration are going to have to wrestle with together. So I'll stop there. I think I've got all of them. I do. You want to see the others' list? I'm sorry, this didn't make it into your packets, because I just put this together this afternoon. But some of these are big things, some of them are small things. So what I've heard a couple of times is we need to engage with the county about our election, our school, our county elections that are held at our schools, partly because now we have school safety and certain entrances that are blocked. And so it's really hard, because we're trying to encourage our parents and our kids to all go through, you know, the secure door. But then we have an election in the school, and we've got all these community members walking in the school. So it kind of flies in the face of what we're trying to do with school safety. So that's a topic that Pat and I, and perhaps others, need to engage with our county and talk about election sites. I already mentioned Lower Miller Creek Road. That's an issue that's just come up in the last couple of weeks. Some of these are issues that I think we can work through fairly quickly, but I didn't want to lose them in terms of initiatives. School wellness and nutrition. I met with the Wellness Committee last week. They've developed some pretty robust recommendations around school snacks and nutrition. And we're just right in the middle of getting those implemented. But it's an important piece that we're kind of on the last step of that. But it's a really important piece that is going to require some work. We've got two schools, Franklin and Washington, that are IB candidate schools. They're right in an important phase in their process. They're deciding what steps they need to take to become full IB schools. So there's some work there. If you're not aware of this project, I'm sorry we haven't updated the board on this one. But Lowell is currently engaged with a lot of community partners about creating a community school at Lowell. And that means a lot of rich partnerships with Parks and Rec and with other folks to really develop activities outside of the school day, so out-of-school activities. But that's an important project that we need to pay attention to. You're well aware of the English Languages Arts Curriculum. We're still in implementation of that. That's going to take a few more years. So it's really important work. This one I mentioned earlier, but last legislative session, there's a new law that came out about dyslexia that involves screening, training, and implementation of what we're going to do with that. This one is one that will take a lot of teacher training or some teacher training. And so we want to make sure that we have that on our list of things we're working on. I would like to develop an action plan around that one. And then the last one down here, something that we're working on right now, is working with a community, a group of community members on inclusion, diversity, and equal access to education. I'll provide more information on that in the future. But this has become an issue that is important for our district to just be aware of, the practices that we're doing in our district around inclusion and diversity and equal access for all students.
I'd like to make a comment, Rob, about the dyslexia legislation. For those of you who might not be aware, many of you may be, dyslexia is a disorder that's been in the federal code in special education forever. As an example, right into, built right into the federal code. And it's probably the least identified disability by all accounts. And it's a real sleeper of a disorder, because in its milder forms, it's very hard to detect. And so there are literally across the country hundreds of thousands of students in classrooms that are not identifying with this disorder that struggle every day just to pass their classes. And they don't understand why they're struggling. Their parents don't understand, and the teaching community doesn't understand. So this piece of legislation is huge, way bigger than you might imagine at this point to drill deeper into it. So I think it's going to require a lot of work.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
And just on that topic, getting beyond the screening, training, implementation of the screening, what do you do with those students who are identified?
Yeah, so that's the big thing, is that's why I feel like we need a plan, because this is new for us, and we need to figure out, you know, what we're currently doing, or what we can do, or what we should be doing.
And lots of great models are available.
Okay, so I promise, that's it, no more. I wanted to just mention, in July, I gave you a written plan of what I was going to work on. And I actually updated that plan and marked out all the things that I have completed. I'm happy to give you a copy of that. But here are some things I haven't done yet that I need to do. I promised that I'd start meeting with school staff. This is one that I have struggled with these first five months, just because of the number of community meetings I've had. But that's my next step, is to really start meeting with school staff. The regional superintendents, I've met with a few of them, but not all of them. So I just want to make sure that that's still on my list. Student council. Tomorrow, I'm going to meet with the student council at Seeley Swan. But I want to make sure I get out to the other high schools as well and middle schools to meet with their student councils. And then parent councils as I can. I want to make sure I try to get to those. The last thing I'll tell you is that something that I wanted to start earlier this year, but just ran out of time. But we're going to start these in January, and that's my superintendent advisory council. So there's really three of them right now. There's a parent one, a certified one, and a classified superintendent advisory council. The purpose of those councils is really to provide me information and advice. And so what I've asked the principals to do is identify one person, one parent, one certified, one classified from their schools to represent their school in this advisory council. We meet once a month. Next year, we'll start in September rather than January, and we meet throughout the school year. And the membership can change from year to year, but the process stays the same. So that's something that'll start in January, and we're really looking forward to that. And I'll be sharing these imperatives with my advisory council as well to get their feedback. Are we ready for, are we ready? Any questions on any of the cards that you have? So what I'd like you to do is do some prioritization. And what I'm asking you to do is to try to get down to three that you would... Three that you would consider, like, you know, what you would like to see sort of immediate imperatives. like, you know, what you would like to see sort of immediate imperatives or immediate action on. And if, I think there's an other card there too, so if that's, if that's one of yours, would you please write down what, you know, what your other is and then share that with me? But try to get down to three. And the way, the best way to do this, if you haven't done this exercise before, is, I think there's about 16 of them, so maybe start going, getting to eight first, just, you know, maybe top eight, bottom eight, and then take your top eight and get down to four, and then take your top four and get to three. So that's, that's probably the easiest way to do it. And after you've gotten three, I will give you three stickers. There's only three stickers and you'll just place your stickers on this chart paper up here of the three that, that are your top three. Does that make sense?
Do you think we should, as we weigh these against each other, do you think we should think logistically as well as hopefully? You know what I mean?
I do know what you-
Some of them are easier to do than others?
Yeah, I, I do know what you mean and, and I, I forgot to mention this, but you know, all of these things will require work and we're, we're committed to working on all of these. We just can't do all of them right now. And so I think it is, I think it is okay to think like, logistically to some degree, but I also am really curious as to what's important to you personally. And so that means something to me as well. And so I think some of these will just be like, I know this is a tough one, but it's really important to me and I think we should work on it.